Okay, let's go. All right, I call this a regular city council study session to order. Roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Deceo.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Byers is absent.
All right. Next up is public comment. If you would like to make a public comment to the council, there are forms in the back that you can bring up to our clerk up here. As of right now, we only have one. Each person has two and a half minutes and a total of 15 minutes that we'll allow for public comment. So first up is Joe Daniels. Make your way up and introduce yourself. Thank you.
My name is Joe Daniels and I'm a resident of Yakima, Washington. The revelation is given. This is a revelation from Yazou. God gave it to him to show those who serve God what would happen soon. God made it known by sending her servant John to... Sending her servant John. John is a witness to everything he saw. What he saw is God's word and what Yazou has said. Blessed is the one who reads out loud the words of this prophecy. Blessed are those who hear it and think everything it says is important. The time when these things will come true is near. Greeting and praise to God. I, John, am writing this letter. I'm sending it to the seven churches in the age of mine. May grace and peace come you from God. She is the one who is and who was and who will come. May grace and peace come from you, Yazou. He is the faithful witness of what he has shown can be trusted. He was the first to rise from the dead. He rules over the kings of the earth. Glory and power belong to Yazou, who loves us. He has set us free from our sins by pouring on his blood. He has made us members of his royal family. He has made us priests who serve his God and mother. Glory and power belong to Yazou forever and ever. Amen. Look, he is coming with the clouds. Every eye will see him, even those who pierced him will see him. All the nations of the earth will mourn because of him. Zechariah, chapter 12, verse 10. This will really happen. Amen. I am the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end, says the Lord God. I am the one who is and who was and who will come. I am the mighty one. I would just like to say 27 states had slavery here in America. Alaska had slavery. Arizona had slavery. Arkansas had slavery. Colorado had slavery. Connecticut had slavery. Delaware had slavery. Florida had slavery. Georgia had slavery. Hawaii had slavery. Idaho had slavery. Kansas had slavery. Louisiana had slavery. Maine had slavery. Michigan had slavery. Minnesota had slavery. Mississippi had slavery. Nevada had slavery. New Hampshire had slavery. New Jersey had slavery. New York had slavery. North Carolina had slavery. Ohio had slavery. Oklahoma had slavery. Iowa had slavery. Oregon had slavery. South Carolina had slavery. Tennessee had slavery. And even Texas. So I say to the council, do you believe that you owe over 4 million black slaves something from this country? Since they built this country? Do you not feel as part of the United States of America and a state that's in the United States and Yakima being a city? That you do not owe your blacks something for building this country? Then a dad sacrificed his lives for this country and to this very day, they still slaves? Did you say you owe them nothing? Well, Yazou say you do. You owe them something and you gonna give it to them or you gonna take it from you? May God have mercy on us all. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Next up is Tony Corsi. Councilmember, you're keeping time, right?
Yep, he was right on it.
Do you understand that, young man? Because Yakima has what? Criminal enterprise? Understand this. Should you care? Here's a strong suggestion. Watch Yakima City Council 716, 2019. A suggestion was made to obey all the federal laws. The lady also said there was a church up on 72nd with a steeple on Nob Hill. So we all know about that, or if you don't, I don't really care. Because you guys don't care about what's going on today, yesterday, or any other day. So let me inform you all again. Because of choices. A lady ran for governorship. Did you hear what I said? A lady ran for governorship and her name was Christine Gregwire. You guys had a... Took the funds and decided to run an ad and say, what do we want to do with this money for the city of Yakima? I don't work for the state. I don't work for the city. I had a business and you guys still ain't strong enough to tell me how in the hell you got two properties? That one's mine, one's my wife. The other one on 34th is mine, but we're going to court over that. And then you guys are going to answer me this. I've asked way too many times and you guys hear me? You see me and you say nothing? It's bullshit. With that said, the guy back east made a statement. He's going to have fun with the name. I don't care. He could have all the funds with any name he wants. Charity. You guys ain't going to make a pimple on me. I'm telling you this. If I have a water right claim in Seda and you guys look at plans for housing projects or a developer makes a plan and they come to you guys to get your okay and you okay it and you don't have the right to make that plan? And if your name's Steve Hahn and you bulldoze down the pump house and you don't have 50% of that water right claim? Then you're a thief. Simple as that. And if you guys don't have the law to stand behind you, you better figure out what's going to happen. Because I know I'm right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Corsi.
Yeah, because there's a shared parking permit for the property on 16000.
All right. Next up is Gina Hernandez.
Evening, council. Gina Hernandez, resident of Yakima. I just wanted to say thank you for not responding, for seeing some of these things, listening to some of these things that are being said and not responding. We've heard some of them over and over and over again without any more details, any more clarity or any more facts, to the point. And whatever happened in 2019, y'all weren't here. Thank you for that because there's no need to be pointing fingers at y'all. Hope we get a lot of good information yet this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public comment on Zoom, Mr. Wheeler?
No, there is not.
All right. I am going to close public comment. Next up is Trevor Martin with the... Our planning manager with land use basics, middle housing legislation and comprehensive plan process. Sounds so riveting.
Yes. Oh, oh, yes. I'm going to do my best to... To try to not get all asleep. Planning and zoning. Sorry. Everybody's favorite topic to talk about, I'm sure.
It's better than budgets.
Yeah. I may be a little biased though. So, good evening. My name is Trevor Martin. I'm the planning manager here in Yakima. And tonight I'm going to be talking to you a little bit about the history of planning, planning and zoning, middle housing, comprehensive planning. And if there's any time you have some questions, please feel free to stop me and ask for clarification. There it is. Okay, okay. Do you need me to repeat all that, Mike?
We could hear you.
Okay, all right. Great. Yeah, feel free to stop me and ask any questions or clarification, or if there's something you want me to bring back in the future, let me know. I'm happy to do that. So to kind of preface this presentation, I want to talk a little bit about definitions. So I'll go through this. I'm not going to read all of this verbatim. There are slides and it's all available online and everything, but I'll kind of just talk about it in summary. Land use, which is the regulation on how real property is developed. Zoning, dividing up the landscape of the city into different zones. Zoning maps are often used to define that landscape. Development regulations are any sort of municipal controls or city controls that are used to develop property. Subdivision, it's a process of carving up one parcel of land into a smaller piece. Rezone, that's changing the zoning of that land, of that parcel from one zoning designation to another, going from commercial to industrial or going from residential to commercial, so on and so forth. And development or use, that's what the site is being used for. YMCA 1502, that contains all of our definitions. There's one honorable mention. It's variance. A lot of people use the word variance interchangeably with a lot of things and I'm not going to get into that too much tonight, but variance is... You essentially, there's a word with variance. It's hardship. There has to be a proven hardship when there's a land use action or development. So just a brief history in this, I'm not going to, again, they're just kind of things to be aware of when thinking about planning and zoning. There's hundreds of years of history here, so I'm kind of starting at 1900 and, you know, post-industrial revolution kind of era.
You were here then?
Yes, yep, yep. I was going, yeah. So, but these are the things that this has kind of shaped our landscape and where we're at today. So first one was New York that I wanted to mention was the New York Tenement Housing Law. I have some visual aids. I'm not going to read any chapters out of this, but just, just...
Please don't.
Not going to. But just, you know, if you're ever interested in it, they are pretty interesting books overall. There's this book called How the Other Half Lives, written by Jacob Rees. But that, it really covers the New York Tenement housing laws at the time. It talks about the living conditions and the city of New York really... How the response, I suppose, from landlords and working with the working class and how to shape their living conditions. First Planning Commission, Hartford, Connecticut, 1907. First Metropolitan Plan, 1909. That was Daniel Burnham of Chicago. Standard Zoning Enabling Act. So around 1920, 22, there's been a lot of experimentation with and thought processes on how cities should develop. We're seeing more urbanization at this time, people moving around. So you have a lot of people designing cities and out of that was formed the Zoning Enabling Act. So that was a federal law that passed that was adopted saying, okay, there is... Cities are allowed to start zoning. It wasn't as in-depth as it is today, but there was some very basic zoning language that came out of that. And then the big one to know about in 1926 is Euclid v. Ambler. So this was the Supreme Court case that upheld zoning as a regulatory police power for cities. So in this case, Euclid, Ohio enacted some... They imposed some zoning laws in their city. Ambler Realty disagreed with that. There was, they wanted to develop some industrial site next to some residential. Ambler or Euclid said, no, let's pump the brakes on that a little bit. We're going to, we're not going to allow that. They went to the Supreme Court and said, yes, you actually, cities can exercise zoning as part of their regulatory oversight.
So there's no limits on that?
Oh, there's, I mean, there's lots of limits on zoning and how it works because there's more... Because there's also, you have to factor in takings and you have to factor in due process and all these other things. But establishing zoning, that's, that has been upheld in the courts for the last 100 years. Yeah, at the Supreme Court level. But yes, there are lots of limits on zoning and how that works exactly and development. Yeah. 1927, again, there's more thought process going on about planning and how that works. So the Planning Enabling Act was created. And 19, and then as we start to roll along, 1934, the first US Housing Act passed at that point in time. And that was a response to the Great Depression and created more or less the mortgage system that we have today. 30-year lending. And we have the Great Depression, World War II. World War II happens after World War II, the landscape starts to shift again after... You know, as the United States kind of becomes this world superpower, things start to change a little bit. We have the GI Bill that passes. GI Bill gives access to, gives veterans access to tuition benefits and also the ability to buy a home. So that's something that changes. And as this is happening, we start to have suburbanization, Levitt Towns, redlining, some of these deeper issues. We see a net migration from inner cities to suburbs and housing developments in those areas. And as those start to develop, Levitt Town, that's... I'm blanking on his name right now. I probably have it here in front of me. But that was named after the person who more or less helped design this type of subdivision at that time. And it was a lot of like Sears houses, so to speak, but prefabbed houses that were kind of... That created the subdivisions of the 30s and 40s. And then redlining, so there's another book called The Color of Law. But that was, that was a practice that kind of started at this point in time that... Where governments and banking systems worked together in not the most positive of ways, but kind of shifted, shifted who could buy houses where, specifically in black communities throughout the United States. So that's, it's an interesting read and, yeah, worth looking at. And then we can, we kind of, as we start to move on from there, we have cities thinking about how they develop, what they're looking at a little more. And then we get into our first urban growth boundaries in the 1958, which was established in Lexington, Kentucky. And famed for bluegrass. They wanted to protect the bluegrass areas of Lexington, Kentucky, which is why it was created. 65, Department of Housing and Urban Development. 66, Historic Preservation Act, which the city of Yakima is a certified local government. So we, we have worked with the federal government in the past on listing properties as historic properties and doing tax credit evaluations. In 1968, you have Fair Housing Act, which was, again, part of the Civil Rights Act, the Civil Rights Movement era, which that was housing more, that addressed housing based upon racial makeup. And then in 1970, we have the establishment of the EPA, which, and then NEPA, which are National Environmental Protection Agency Act. At that point in time, established under Nixon. And that's, that's kind of where we, I'll talk a little bit more about that in the future, but that's where we get SEPA from is our State Environmental Policy Act. And then the last one I'm going to mention is the establishment of the Community Development Block Grant Program. The city of Yakima is part of that program, which was established in 1974. So that brings us to planning and zoning today. So as, which, so I wanted to start out here a little bit with a handful of RCWs. Some of the big ones, though, on the screen in front of you, but one of the big ones is 3678, which is our Growth Management Act. That was enacted in 1990. So that is basically the statute that established our growth management boundaries and basically told the cities, hey, you have to establish comprehensive plans. You have to start planning for your growth and grow accordingly, grow appropriately. We don't want to see sprawl. We want to see cities using their land the best that they can. So I remember I talked to you guys a little bit about, or the council about that a little bit at our last meeting. But this is, this is really the RCW that established that, was the Growth Management Act. RCW 3670B, that's Local Project Review. That one was played with a little bit recently, last year at the state level. They updated our project timelines when it comes to the city and how we process our land use codes. So going to jump into this a little bit. Planning is a technical and regulatory process focused around property design and land use. Zoning is a method used by cities to direct specific types of desired growth and growth patterns. And the city of Yakima currently uses a use-based zoning code. So in the city of Yakima, we have this large matrix that tells you what zone, or it tells you what zone you're looking at. And then on the side of it, it shows you its table 4-1. It'll tell you all the different types of uses that we evaluate in the city of Yakima. So as we, as somebody comes into our office upstairs and they say, I would like to build such and such, we'll go through that list and say, yes, if you fit into this or you fit into this, or maybe you don't fit here. And that's one form of zoning. That's, there's multiple forms of zoning, but that's the one that we use right now. Other forms include mixed use, performance-based incentive. And then there's also other tools in there like planned unit developments, overlay zones. And we don't have them, but there are transferable development rights or TDRs that are used in other states. But those, those forms of zoning, they focus more upon asking for a certain build or development to happen at a site. So take the, take like the R3 zoning district, for example, because it's multi, multiple... Multiple unit. So others, some cities might say, okay, so this is our multi, this is our high-density land use. We want to see an apartment building at at least 20 units in this area.
It's not an actual alarm.
No, no, no. Yeah.
Everybody pull aside the road.
Whereas in this, whereas in the city of Yakima, we don't, we don't direct them that prescriptively. We say you can go at this density, but you don't have to go. Whereas other cities will say you have to go at this density or greater.
Does a, does a city get to determine what base zoning that they want to use?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So there are some, yes, and I'll get to that in a little bit with when it comes to like middle housing a little bit. But yeah, we can, so the city more or less establishes how they want their zoning to look. That's 100% regulatory power of the city. How we want zoning to look, where we want different items to go, how we want this landscape to grow. Yeah, that is up to the city and can be reevaluated at any time or changed at any time. It is an undertaking. I will say that, depending on what it is you want to do. We're always trying to update our regulations with, you know, what the state asks of us at minimum. But if there is ever a future discussion on looking at, you know, there's things that I'm not going to get into today, but floor area ratios, that's, that's talking about the, you know, the use, the density of the use inside of the building. That's something we can definitely explore. That's, there's, you know, incentive-based zoning on...
What is incentive-based zoning?
That's, again, they're, they're, so they're... Different cities have different policies when it comes to... When it comes to like parking or landscaping or other cities might have impact fees or... There's a handful of like development regulations that kick in or we'll oftentimes call them conditions or design standards that kick in when doing X project. So some of those could be waived, some of those could be the, could be reduced, like for parking, for example. If you're going to do, you know, a 30-unit apartment building in the downtown and there's, there's available on-street parking, maybe we don't have to look at parking standards as heavily. We can reduce that requirement by 30% or something like that. So there's, there's different ways to look at it, but it just kind of depends on where you are and the different types of development standard. Yeah. So there's, there's lots of ways to do it and think about it.
What do we need to do to get a lot more new business in Yakima?
Well, that's, that would be through, well, so planning is different than economic development.
It's in the plan, right? It just happens.
So planning is our guiding documents and guiding principles. So we can, I'm happy to work with anybody who wants to do future economic development in the city. We can, we can do that. There are lots of different tools that the city has that aren't being as, as displayed as they potentially could be with the public, such as our multifamily tax credit exemptions, our historic preservation tax credits. We have, we have different tools that we can use right now. The multifamily tax credit, that is, that is a zone that the city council establishes. So right now, it's, it's not very big. It's kind of in our downtown core, but that zone can be changed and manipulated based upon how the council sees fit. So those are, those are things that I would work with anybody who would be interested in doing that sort of work, but it's, it's, it's a little bit different than what, what planning does. So we, we would work hand in hand with economic development. We don't have that person right now, unfortunately, so.
One of the things I've kind of noticed is that planning has a tendency to add a great deal of cost to projects.
I don't know if planning adds a great deal of cost. I would say being unprepared in a project adds a great deal of cost to a project. So we, the city of Yakima offers a complimentary service, which is our Development Services Team Meeting. And it's a free, it's a free complimentary service. So if there's anybody who wants to develop a project, we'll sit down with our Codes Division, our, our Building, Water, Wastewater, Nob Hill Water, and we'll talk through a project before a shovel even hits the grounds, before anybody submits a dollar over the counter. So we can do that. So it's a, it's a thing that I'm trying to push more so that way people are more prepared as they, they come to our office. Yes. Yeah. But I, yes, we, yes, I do know what you're saying, though. Yeah. So, yeah, planning staff, more or less, we, we do these sort of things. But more or less, we work on land use applications that come across our counter. We work on a lot of quasi-judicial actions. We work with the Hearing Examiner. We prepare draft plans, policies, ordinances, handle public noticing, publish administrative permitting applications. We do public hearings, the Hearing Examiner and Planning Commission. And we will, you know, work with those, we work with the Planning Commission to update regulations. And then we'll provide, you know, technical assistance. The other thing we cannot do and specifically is our departments, we will help as much as we can with applications, but we generally do not fill out applications for people because things can get, there's a gray area that can be crossed pretty quickly or entered into pretty quickly. So we'll generally try not to fill out applications for people because it's, there could be some conflicts that arise from that. And then working with Planning Commission, I'll be talking, asking you a little bit later about ComPlan, talking to you a little bit later about ComPlants stuff and text amendments. Plan Commission also currently looks at long plats and policy and regulatory review. So other, other regulations under planning right now are subdivision process. We have a lot of subdivisions every year, a lot of units being created, or parcels, I should say, created every year. This one right here is Champion's Place. This is right near Sozo. This one is underway right now. And State Environmental Policy Act, so SEPA. A lot of you may have heard that term before. We, we implement that. Critical Areas Review, which is part of our Comprehensive Plan Update. Shoreline Review, Historic Preservation and the Hearing Examiner. Let's see here. Hearing Examiner. So the Hearing Examiner reviews, often reviews mostly quasi-judicial items or what would oftentimes be considered conditional use permits or type three reviews is what he will hear. So they're project-specific applications. So he'll be looking at, and the big thing between type one and type two reviews in our, in our city's policy, our city's regulations, is that type three reviews are generally reviewed as not compatible. So the applicant will go through the process of mitigating any sort of concerns through the public hearing process. of mitigating any sort of concerns through the public hearing process. Let's see here, so we, we do have a, a hearing examiner that handles that, that level of review. And then, any hearing examiner decision can be appealed to the superior court within 21 days, I think we talked about that not too long ago as well, which helps clean up that process a little bit.
I know we have pretty strict timelines when people want these variances and stuff, or I mean, when people get accused of a crime.
Yeah.
Very strict timelines, they got to get to trial right away, you get an answer.
Yeah.
I've seen some of these planning things that have lasted forever and a day.
Mm-hmm.
There's a time value of money that comes into that. What are we doing as a city to eliminate these unnecessary delays?
Some of the delays happen, unfortunately, but no, we, we do, we oftentimes have to work backwards and work with the applicants, and work with the other, other parties of record that may be attached to a land use application, so we have to try our best to pick out times that work when all staff is available, because there may be different, different staff members who have input in this. So we have to make sure that any sort of legal councils available, any sort of other divisions are available, any other, the other parties of records, if they, if they do have standing, they do have some ability to kind of direct what, when the timelines are. So we try to work with these groups to establish timelines as, as quickly as we can. As far as like type three reviews and public hearings, we do have a state, the state has given us, I believe, 165 days to process those applications, so we do have a, a state statute that regulates that timeline. Other ones aren't as clear, but we do try to, we do try to process them, if, if it's something that's going to be going through the public hearing process, we try to stick with the process that we're already using. So if it is something that's going to have more public hearings, we'll try to implement something like the type three review process, that way it's not, we're not treading in unfamiliar territory. So there's a lot to that answer, we do try our, the other thing would be, we, there's, really two and a half of us up there for a city, a city our size, that's pretty unheard of.
How do you have a half a person?
That's me. That's me, yeah. So, yeah, I'm, I'm a half a person that, that processes all of this. So we, no, we, we do the best we can with our timelines and the, the amount of permits each person is, is processing. So sometimes it might just be that, you know, one of the planners has two hearings here, two hearings here, they're, they're not going to get to it till a month or two later, because they've already have their, all of their time scheduled up, so that, that happens as well. Yeah.
I've been sitting on the planning committee, and I've seen where people don't know exactly what to do, so they just punt and table it till the next meeting, and.
Yeah.
I've seen things like that happen, and I'd like to find a way to make that stop. When, when we are entrusted to make a decision for somebody, we shouldn't be putting it down the road indefinitely, we should.
Yeah.
Find a way to make a decision, yes or no, but make a decision so that they can move forward.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that, yeah, I mean, I only have so much control over the planning commission, I'll, I'll work with them, but they're, they're, they're their own bodies sometimes, too, and they, they don't always listen to me, so. Which is, you know, fine. So, next thing I kind of want to.
Just like us.
Yeah.
It's kind of fun to make government admit they're not perfect.
We, we do the best we can with what we have, so that's, yes. Yeah, we're, sometimes we're all finding our way, you know, especially when regulations change, yeah. Next thing I kind of want to talk about is the State Environmental Policy Act, CIPA. CIPA is not that scary, a lot of people don't want to go through CIPA, they don't, they don't want to go through the process. CIPA's scary when there's highways and, and big project, big capital projects involved, but a lot of times for smaller municipal projects, things that happen inside a city, it's not that scary, it's a, it's a 21-day public, or 14-day now, 14-day public notice period. The city, the city has adopted, the big things out of here is, there are a list of categorical exemptions that the state puts out, and we can, we can adopt those exemptions, and we have adopted the state's guidelines on the maximum exemption, so, which is really good, that's, that's helped with a lot of, that's helped slim down the number of CIPA applications that we get per year, which is, which is a good thing. So, but it's not that scary of a process, a lot of times it's wrapped in with other applications, and we can kind of do both things at once. But we do have to implement it, we can't, there's a handful of CIPA agencies that do look at these projects as they're reviewed, they, they do have standing, and they can give us comment when we do have a project that requires CIPA. So we will work with those agencies, such as Department of Fish and Wildlife, Ecology, the Yakima Nation, Yakima County, Clean Air Authority, those are all CIPA agencies that have input into this process. So a project like this, that you might see CIPA on, is a rezone, like a large manufacturing building, they might have some, a CIPA that, that's attached to them, so it just kind of depends. And really, one of the, one of, one of the big reasons that planning exists is to protect due process. Everybody has the right to, you know, use, has the right to submit an application and use their property as they see fit. The city has, the city and the city council have adopted guidelines that guide that, that, guide that process, and kind of tell us where to go. And we, planning is really there to make sure that everybody is treated fairly as they submit applications to the city. So that's, that's really what we're here, here, here to do, and to do our best to kind of minimize any sort of liability and exposure for, for land use, when it comes to that sort of thing. So that's all I have for planning, in, planning and zoning in a nutshell, do you have any questions?
Any questions, council? Straightforward.
Didn't miss anything.
All right.
All right.
So the next big.
Next.
Next, yeah, yes. So next big thing, and you've probably all been hearing about middle housing, and what's coming up with, what's, what's been happening at the state level, what's coming our way, what's coming your way, that you're gonna, you're gonna be kind of tasked to, to examine and look at and make decisions on. And one of those things, or, or, you know, adopt, forced to adopt, but I'll kind of get there in a little bit. One of the big things that came out of the, the state last year was House Bill 1110, and 1110 is called the, or less, the Middle Housing Bill, or the Missing Middle. And that refers to housing types that are between single-family residence and mid-rise multifamily development, so duplexes to kind of fourplexes, kind of sixplexes, depending, depending on some other things. But it's, it's duplexes to fourplexes is mostly what we'll be looking at. So kind of want to show you some of the middle housing types here, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, fiveplexes, six, townhouses, stack flats, courtyards, courtyards, apartments, cottage housing. We do have a cottage housing code that we've adopted, we've been building, we've been working with developers on duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes for years and years and years. Some of these other things, we don't have a lot of, we haven't really built so much of, we've built a few townhouses, we have, we have common wall development right now, that's something that we've, we've adopted. That would be common wall development, if you're familiar with like the 86th and Summit View area, there's some houses that go up, like, I think the road is called Khalil, but they're, they're, they look like duplexes, but they're actually common wall developments in that area. Racket Lane Townhomes, that, I guess a townhome style, but those actually are units that sit on their own individual parcels, so they can be bought and, and sold like a, like a unit, not a parcel, yeah. Again, here are some illustrative differences between those different types of housing. And really, the big thing here is, is that until I've heard otherwise, but one of the big things that's coming with this is essentially by the end of 2026, the cities, certain cities have to adopt middle housing standards, and Yakima is one of those, one of those cities. We don't have to adopt, there's a, there's a lot of standards that are, that apply to like the Seattle and Tacoma and Bellevue areas, that we don't have to adopt, such as, but that was more relating to like transit stops and these other things. But we do have to adopt the part of it where, within the city of Yakima, a, a fourplex is essentially allowed to be built on every parcel within the city of Yakima. It doesn't have to be built, but it's, but we have to allow the option of it to be built. So, and there's going to be a lot more that comes out of that, as luckily, as, I mean, as part of our comprehensive plan process, we're going to be having some consultants looking at our, our, our current, in, our current plan, we do, all of our, a lot of our utility plans and our wastewater plans, our water plans, they're very, very much up to date, so there's a lot of current data that we're going to be able to pull from those, those documents and kind of consolidate in our comprehensive plan, that will look at our growth rates and our growth patterns, and look at what exactly this means. So it's kind of, it's good timing for all of this to kind of come together right now, so.
Do we just make the current R1s just a different thing, and then create a new R1 that is multi?
Yeah.
Middle housing?
Yeah.
Just move them to something else?
It'll be, and that's, yes, exactly, yep. So that is, then that's.
An R1 and a half.
Or one and a half, or, you know, low-density residential district, or something like that. So, yeah, it's, we're, we're going to have to look at it and what exactly that means in the future, and then, you know, reevaluate from there. But yeah, it's, single, the single-family zoning district is, is going to change, so it's, no, I just implement the law, that's, that's what I'm here to do, so, and, and tell everybody about it, yeah.
When you come up with community areas like parks, and areas where kids can play and so forth, areas where schools can be built, are we looking at that as we extend out into West Valley? Are there places identified that are eventually going to be parks? Or do we just wait till it all gets filled up, and then buy a bunch of houses and make parks out of that?
It's a good question. So there you, there was a West Valley development plan that was, that existed once upon a time, it hasn't been updated in a while, as part, that's a separate item over here. As far as our zoning and planning and our subdivision regulations go, there currently are not, and that's something that the planning commission has brought up, and something we're going to be looking at pretty soon here, but there are no, there really are no guidelines. We, we evaluate how close a subdivision is to a park, but there's no criteria that says, okay, well, if you're over a mile, you have to start dedicating land to, to a park, or, or something like that. So we do not have that, the city does not have that right now, but it's something that's the planning commission has requested to look at in the near future.
The other one that comes into play is, our traffic patterns are starting to get overloaded heading out into West Valley, and is anybody looking at the, a way to circumvent that, or to address that problem, or are we just going to make everybody come in on Titus and Nob Hill forever, and just let the traffic pile up?
Yeah, so those are, those are also good questions. So yes, those, those are items that are regularly, regularly examined as well, and I mean, as part of our comprehensive plan update, we do have to update our transportation element as well, and that is looked, that is also examined, so that's, there's a lot to unpack with that question as well, because there's also, you know, looking at where those corridors would be established, there's looking at, you know, what, what the level of services at, on our roads, and different intersections, different times of the days, so there's a lot that comes into play with, with that question. But yes, it is being looked at, it is something that is constantly evaluated. We do, I mean, we do have standards right now, that when there are certain developments that come into the city, we, we call them a traffic concurrency analysis, so if, if we suspect that your, your business is going to generate X amount of trips, we will ask them to describe their business, and one of our engineers upstairs will, will look at that business and make sure that there's enough capacity in the road to accommodate, accommodate for that, for that development at the time.
That's kind of looking backwards, I mean, we really should have.
Mm-hmm.
Corridors identified that we want to have a solution to this problem.
And, and we do, yeah, we, we do, it's, it's all, all a matter of timing, and, you know, funding, and all these other things, so it's, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot that comes into play, you know, if we, yeah, if we had a magic wand, and we could update it all at the same time, that would be great, but we have to kind of.
I also think it's probably a lot of coordination between.
Yeah.
The county and city on some of these areas.
And the state, and, yeah, yeah, all these other things, so, yeah. But yes, it is, it is also being looked at, and I would be, there's, I can, I can point you to the resources, I point you to the resources.
I want to see the places where it's going to be.
And then, the other one that, that we should be a little bit aware of, and then, that's, that's constantly changing, is House Bill 1337. This, I think, was two years ago, I think, when this is initially adopted, and it changed again last year, I believe, but initially, when this bill was passed, it said, hey, all these cities that fit this, this definition, you have to adopt an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and allow them, allow them in this sort of space. We said, fine, okay. And then it was updated, now you have to allow two accessory dwelling units, and they can't be, you, the city cannot require them to be any smaller than 1,000 square feet. We can set it at 1,000 square feet, but we can't require them to be smaller than a square, so 1,000 square feet, so, okay, fine.
Have we had any?
We, we, we haven't had as many as you, one may think. We've, I would imagine we have maybe, in total, since initially adopting this, maybe a dozen total. I remember probably for the first five to six years after this, like, they had, I don't know, no, it's not been that long, it hasn't been that long, I don't know, it kind of blends together.
At least four.
Yeah, it's been at least four years, but I remember those first couple of years after this was adopted, I think we had three people apply, and maybe one person build it, and the, last year was, I think, the first year where I saw a few more of them actually getting built, so it really hasn't, it really hasn't been that, that much. So that's kind of one of the big things with, with House Bill 1337. And then the big one that's coming up, that I think, that a lot of people are kind of looking at right now, is unit lot subdivision. So what is unit lot subdivision? And here's, here's kind of what it is in a little nutshell, but a unit lot subdivision is a way of processing, or subdividing a portion of a property to split, split off, like, taking a residential lot, subdividing it to create another residential lot. It's not a short plot, it is more or less a singular subdivision to break off one or, or maybe it could be three lots, but it's, it's break, taking a, an existing residential lot and splitting it into two, so that there could be another home, or something else established on another lot. So there, you would see something like this, maybe a potential viable option, say, like in the middle of town, I'm thinking maybe, you know, 16th or 24th, in that area, where there's these longer deep lots, where somebody doesn't necessarily want their entire backyard, and they, they can subdivide that off and technically sell that as a parcel. So that's kind of what that looks like.
You could have an existing property, a lot, that has two houses on it, that has been one parcel forever, and now you can say, okay, I'm going to draw a line in the middle, and make two parcels out of it, and I can sell them individually.
Yeah.
That was not legal just a few years ago, but it's, it's being proposed now, and that's what it's looking?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's one of the things you could do with it, yeah, yeah. There's, there's some more nuance to, to that situation, specifically that you're describing, but yes, that's, that's a good, that is, that will be a way to split that, that property up.
How does the city handle sewer water for?
Right. So that's, that's the other part of it, too. So here, I'm just going to throw some examples up while I talk about this. So yeah, so one of the, one of the things that we do require with subdivisions, and this is, as far as I can tell, still the case with this, is that those services have to be available for that subdivision, so we, we do require new, new units to be tied to, on separate parcels, new units in separate parcels, to be tied to water and sewer. And then, if they aren't available, maybe, I'm going to say, I'm going to put a big, big maybe, there would be other ways to establish, to establish their, their. big maybe, there would be other ways to establish, um, to establish their, their sewer, maybe, maybe through a septic system, but I'm, that's a big maybe and that's, that relies a lot of, that's relies on a lot of things to fall into place to be able to establish a septic system. Um, but they do have to connect it. Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Um, but they do have to connect to water and that's one of the big things is they do have to do, they do have to connect to, to water. Drilling wells in the city is a very difficult thing to do and it's not something that, uh, it would be a long, long, long process, if even possible. So, um, we would have-
Happened to be in the hearing when they were talking about it and basically they said, if you've got this accessory dwelling unit and it's hooked to water and sewer on the property, all you do is put your lot lines and then you can have it be separate. They don't talk about easements. They don't talk about what happens when the water line fails and has to be redone, who's responsible. All those things are just put on the back burner.
Yeah.
Put your property lines and you're done.
Yeah, so that's, this is true, yes. Um, so we, we do review the standards, we do review the development standards when it comes to subdivisions. So we oftentimes will make sure that there are access easements that allow, you know, access to that property in perpetuity. Um, but when it comes, and we do make sure that they are connected to water and sewer. But yes, when that line is established and there is an issue, say there is an issue between parcel A and parcel B where a water line does fail, that becomes an issue that the two property owners are now going to have to figure out together. So that's, the city is, is not involved with it from that, that point. So we've, we've reviewed it, we've reviewed it to make sure that at the time of subdivision, it meets the city's criteria for development and we let them go forth and prosper. Yeah.
So you're saying, so you're saying we can just put more restrictions in on something like that?
Well, we can, we can adopt different design standards, yeah, um, for some of these things.
Some of that's limited by the legislature though. They're saying that you cannot put any restrictions on it. You just have to let it happen.
So there's a little asterisk next to that. So if there, um, again, there's, there's these little nuances that pop up, that if we are to place restrictions on, on that sort of development, we then have to place those same restrictions on single family units as well. So if we do ask these, you know, this of, again, of this ADU or of this duplex or whatever it is, I think I, yeah, I'll say that right here. Um, yeah, I'll just flip to there right now. But if we do something like that, um, we have to apply that evenly across the board. So the single family home has to do what the duplex is doing and the duplex has to do what the single family home is doing. So.
Interesting.
Yeah. Um, and that's kind of brings me to, again, there's already some, some cities that allow for this unit lot sub, um, subdivision or lot splitting. Um, you know, it's going to be required here in a little bit. So yeah, like I said, many other cities are currently working on codifying something in their regulations, but, uh, we do have some examples to kind of look, look to Spokane being one of them that has been doing it for a while. Um, but then I'm here in other considerations, um, something that I am going to ask the Planning Commission to start exploring a little bit because it's something that they've asked about too is, okay, so what's, what are some things we can start looking at as we move forward in this process? And that would be, you know, one of those things would simply be additional design criteria. Um, what do you, we want our buildings to look like here in Yakima? And we have some really good examples, some really good neighborhoods, some really good historic districts, some really good, um, new subdivisions and some, some, uh, multi-tenant buildings that, that have some really good design elements. Do we, do we, is that something we want to pursue? Do you want, you know, and they have up here in front of you, we have a, a Queen Anne right in the middle, we have a Craftsman on my left, and then a more of like a, a colonial revival art deco style on my right. So there's, and there's design elements in all of those that we can, we can ask for. And it's, it's something that a lot of cities do, um, to kind of help build cohesion, to kind of help, you know, promote that, that sort of thing throughout neighborhoods and as the city starts to develop. And if, you know, we're, if density is the name of the game in the future, maybe we want to start, start at least thinking about some of these things so that way we don't have, you know, a, an ultra-modern, you know, four-story whatever next to, uh, maybe a Craftsman house. So that's, that's just something to, to think about, so, as we, as we go forward and the-
Which really hasn't been thought. I mean, if you drive through Yakima, you see just different eras of building standards and what it looks like from one block to the next and-
Right.
It's kind of hodgepodge, but-
It is, it's, yeah.
It's character.
It's character, it is, yes. Um, but it's, it's not too, it's not too difficult to do. What I've seen lots of cities do, they'll have like 50 different criteria and they'll say, you know, choose eight, choose eight of them and implement those little characteristics on your house. And it's just ways to help build cohesion. Um, and then, so that's, that's kind of the middle housing in a nutshell. Do you have any questions on that?
Any questions, council?
Like, I'm still-
Another proposal that's being considered as we speak, you can put a fifth wheel or a motorhome or a travel trailer, hook it up with a garden hose and that is, will be a legal dwelling unit.
A garden hose? Wow.
That's, that's a proposal that is being considered in Olympia as we speak.
Trevor's dying inside.
Yeah, that's, I mean, all right. We'll, we'll work with it and we'll, you know, I, I do try to pay attention to some of these, these bills as they, as they go through. There's, there's a handful of them that, that do deal specifically with planning and zoning and building right now and, and the, at the state level. There's probably more this year than I've seen in these sort of reasons.
There's a housing shortage.
Yeah, yes.
Trying to address it. There also is a change in what the public is requesting and wanting to buy-
Yeah.
-as well. So there's, there's a little bit of a reaction to the housing market that's happening. If younger generations may not want a single family dwelling, they may want to have a town home or a cottage or something different. So some of it is about that too.
Some of it.
A cost, yes.
And some people are, are going in with their friends to buy a house, you know? It's like, whether or not they're, they're doing it to flip it or to, or they're going to live in it together, but they're, a lot of people are doing that now.
Yeah, no, yeah, but unfortunately I don't set the price of, you know, building materials. So, you know, we, that's, that's one of the things I'm always thinking of as we process these applications, you know, is, is time is money and so, and money is money, so.
It's interesting too, like the state is, keeps doing what they're doing, but I, I would, when you mentioned ADUs, I mean, the whole buzz behind ADUs was this was just going to, this is just going to solve all the issues. We're going to have a bunch of ADUs popping up and it's going to be everywhere and, and it hasn't. And so it would be interesting to be able to be like, hey, guys, so thanks for all this, but, uh, nothing changed. So.
Right. So.
But it is interesting, the current generation doesn't necessarily aspire to own a home like my generation did when we were growing up. And so that necessitates a lot more rentals than we've ever had before in the city because a lot of people just don't care to own a home anymore.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, you know, different people, yeah, different needs, different desires, different, yeah, that's, that's something that's definitely shifting as well.
I think last year in '24, I think there was this, from the Realtors Association talked about how in Yakima it was $358,000 was the average home price. That's a lot for-
I think it's even gone up since then.
Yeah.
Especially in such a poor city.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's a lot.
I think, yeah, that's the point is that there's, there needs to be a ladder for folks and you got to start at the bottom and work your way up.
Yeah.
Right.
That's the middle.
So a lot of these younger folks that are trying to figure out how to buy a house, 300, 400,000 dollars is probably not in their appetite.
No.
So it's not in my appetite.
People are priced out of existence. It's, costs keep going up and cost of government keeps going up, but, uh, the ability, you know, the, the income that people are earning, Yakima is less than half the state average in household income. And we can't do the stuff they do in Seattle and other places. We don't have the resources to do it. And when we get legislated that we have to do it the way they do it, it just makes it that much more difficult. And that's something that discourages me. I, I hate to see that happen. I'd love to have people be able to buy a home if they wanted to. And that's really not, uh, you know, for half the people that live in Yakima, that's not even a possibility right now. That's an awful thing as far as I'm concerned.
So you have the, the next piece.
Next piece, comprehensive planning. Okay, perfect.
Still on A.
Yeah, so I'll try to zoom through this pretty quickly. So, um, I kind of mentioned earlier, RCW 3670A, that's where our Growth Management Act, that's where we're basically told to establish a comprehensive plan and plan for growth in the city and, um, and establish goals and policies that drive the direction that guides that growth. Uh, we're in the mid, we're starting that process right now with our periodic, periodic update. We have to have it at the state level for review probably by February 2026 and adopted by council by June 30th, 2026. However, I did hear that there might be an extension. So if that is the case, I would really appreciate that from our, our state if they're listening, so.
If they're listening.
Yeah. Um, yes, but the, uh, the comprehensive plan guides Yakima's physical development over the next 20 years. It describes values, directs municipal activities, um, talks about urban growth boundaries, how the urban growth boundaries are projected to develop and grow over the next 20 years as well. And, um, a lot of the things that we do with our other documents that the city, the city adopts, which is, I don't know, our, um, transportation plan, our, our water plan, all of those, the, the comprehensive plan is updated to help coordinate the, all of those things, um, from one another.
With the growth management plan, is, is this the process of where you can extend those GMA boundaries further?
Um, yes, it's the, it is the process where they're going to be adjusted, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And so I, and I have been talking to the county about that. Actually, last Friday, I had a meeting with the county and our consultants about that. And, uh, there's a little bit more to unpack with it right now. Um, I can definitely talk to, if anybody wants to know more about that offline, I'd be happy to talk with them offline about that, so. Um, and then, uh, the big thing to take away from the comprehensive plan is without a current or adopted comprehensive plan, cities and counties lose eligibility for state funding programs. Um, that's just one of the things that they've come out and said, and so we try to stay as current as we can. There are required elements that we have to implement in our comprehensive plan, land use, housing capital facilities, utilities, transportation, and the new one being climate resilience, um, housing, uh, new housing requirements, new housing element requirements. So, uh, we do have a required housing element, but we do have to look at, um, different affordability strategies, conduct inventory, which we have been doing, um, a pretty good job of in the past. Um, um, capacity for land use development, policies to support middle housing and, um, address any sort of barriers that may impact, um, any sort of populations, so. And then this is, I guess, what it kind of looks like if you care to look at it too long, but there are other things that, um, again, it's different cities and different parts of the state have to put in their mandatory elements that they have to put in their com- comprehensive plans that we don't have to do, which is great. Um, and then that kind of brings me to the annual amendment process. As part of our comprehensive plan process, we do have what's called an annual amendment process where land use, our property owners can change their future, future land use designation through our comprehensive plan. Because it is a guiding document for the future, we have what's called a future land use category that more or less guides the development of that area. And, um, we do allow property owners to change, to change this and then go through a rezone later on if they want to, or maybe they just amend the future land use and they do something else in the future. I'm not, I don't really know what everybody wants to do, uh, but we do have a process to amend that future land use and kind of change that, that growth, that, those goals and that growth a little bit. Um, and that's, let's see, that's it. Adopting the comprehensive plan, part, part of the comprehensive plan is really a public engagement piece. We really want to hear from the public as we're going through this. There are public engagement portions that we're required to do, that we will be sending out notice, inviting the public, working with the public on different sort of, um, uh, visioning sessions and getting their feedback on what they, really how they see the city growing in the, over the next 20 years. Review by Planning Commission, we complete our SEPA review, 6800s to Commerce, City Council has their, um, public hearing, um, and away we go. And then this is just a fun little slide that I kind of wanted to put in at the, at the end. So to kind of go back to your question about parks and, and address that a little bit. So, but, so, um, do you have any questions for me as we, as we go? I know I kind of flew through those a little bit at the end, but I, I know that I've been up here for a while and I kind of want to be respectful.
Questions?
So for the last 25 years, we've been so excited because we have a couple of hundred acres between the freeway and the city of Yakima that is just dying to be developed.
Yes.
And here it sits, 25 years later. What's going to happen? How, how do we get something going there? Or do we just turn it into a park and call it good?
Well, there, so the big thing about that property is that it is held, it's held privately. Um, so we do have to be a little bit mindful of that. It's, it is held privately.
Yeah, but we have planning ability. We can make them do anything.
So.
Not necessarily.
There-
That's the way it sounded to me when he was going through it all.
There, there, this might be a larger question, um, I don't know if, Ryan, if you're prepared to answer, answer these right now, but we can talk, definitely talk to Sarah about this in the future. But the, yes, there are, there are planning strategies to help, to help encourage development, such as overlays, as, um, um, setting up, just, setting up sort of different, again, incentive planning, um-
Like TIF district?
TIF district, yeah. There's a, here's a handful of things that we, tools that we can use to help encourage that sort of thing. Looking at, you know, the different types of uses and looking at binding site plans. The site does already have a binding site plan, but there are different tools that we can help encourage to, to get things off the ground, get them moving, reducing our, like, review timelines. There's, there's a handful of things that, that might work for, uh, a, a, an area like that, that we would have to explore a little bit. Um, no, which, I don't know if you want to go down the route you're ta, you're talking about necessarily, but yeah, but there are, um, there are definite, definitely ways we can, we can look at that a little bit. And I think the property owner has been open to conversation. I just don't know where they're at in their, their process as far as taking it to the, to the next step and, and developing it. So I know that there's, um, some other things that are on the table right now as far as like the east-west quarter goes, but that's, that's, again, I'm not the one who should be talking about that really, but there are other things that are happening on the site that are in process. So I, I'm, yeah, we can, we can definitely explore that in the future.
Be another study session.
Is there an option to, uh, do something interim? Plant grass and put some walkways through it or do something, you know? I've heard people say that it's going to be another 20 years before anything's going to happen and, you know, it's been looking ugly for the last 20 years. How much longer do we have to put up with ugly?
Right. And, yeah, I mean, so that, that also gets into, um, a, a little bit more of the enforcement realm that I, I do not do necessarily. So that gets more into that enforcement arm a little bit where we start talking about vacant properties, um, you know, unused properties, that sort of things and what that, what that looks like. And that's definitely a conversation for a different day, but there are tools to kind of help, again, encourage maybe some interim beautification, aesthetic projects that can help reduce some of that unsightlyness, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes.
Not a question, just a comment. Um, I know you had brought up density, so, um, I know in District 1 as well, there's a lot of apartment complexes, complexes, um, just walking around and I know, um, there's no room to build, um, anymore or even split housing because I know houses are so close to each other, like you mentioned, different parts of the city are, they do look different and obviously, um, District 1 and 2, there's really close together, so just a consideration when we're thinking of those things as well, just the density and compact, how compact people are already.
Any other questions, council? No?
All right.
Okay. Trevor, you have item B as well.
Yes, I do have item B. So yes, thank you for sitting through all this with me. I appreciate it. Um, again, if there's more you want from the previous subject, just let me know and I'll be happy to send it your way. Um, so now that we've talked a little bit about comprehensive planning, um, I am here before you tonight to request that council sign or authorize a resolution opening up our comprehensive plan amendment process. Um, this would be a consolidated process for 24, 25 and 26, but this would be the process to allow people within the community to submit applications to change- to allow people within the community to submit applications to change, request a change in their future land use designation. So that's, that's what that is. So that way we can wrap it up with our overall big periodic update.
All right.
I would move to adopt that resolution.
Okay. There's been a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Also, yep.
And Councilman Berg seconds. Uh, clerk, would you please read the resolution?
This is a resolution opening the 2025 through 2026 comprehensive plan amendment process pursuant to RCW 36.708.130 and YMC chapter 16.10.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seems pretty straightforward.
Required by law, right?
No, it's optional. You guys get to do it. You don't have to do it. You get to do it.
We should do it.
How much money do we save if we don't do it?
We don't.
We don't save money.
Clerk, let's do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Dicio?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes with a 7-0 vote. Resolution is adopted. Six, sorry. Mayor's not here, so she doesn't get a vote. So six oh vote. Okay. You're not item C though.
Not entirely.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
Okay. So next up is the discussion, the comprehensive plan, including study of impact fees. And we have Bill Preston and Trevor and Connor? I'm assuming this is Connor?
Connor's really excited to get up here, so.
He's hitching at the seat over there.
Um, so it's interesting, while we were sitting here, um, you know, I think the agenda item is called comp plan, um, and impact fees, right? So I did a quick look through my notes and I have the potential to say comp plan quite a bit. So there is definitely a tie here. Um, but if you'll remember right, can you, am I good here?
We got you.
Um, if you remember right, uh, I don't know, month or two ago, council had asked that, uh, staff bring back, uh, discussion regarding impact fees. So city attorney Sarah and I got together and we started looking at that and we realized, huh, this is a little bit bigger than, um, the just one 65 cents a square foot assessment or something like that. So I will admit upfront, this is not my area of expertise, so I'm going to share with you, um, what I found out through this. And then at the end, I kind of have a, an ask of council, um, for that. So I'm going to read this because I think it kind of, or this one sentence of what are impact fees? So, "Impact fees are one-time charges assessed by a local government against a new development project to help pay for any new or expanded public capital facilities that will directly address the increased demand for services created by that development." So I think we've kind of talked in the past that that's a, we understand what that means in concept, but how does a city go about, um, establishing what those rates are? So the rest of this is about how we get there. So there's a lot of RCWs and I'm not about to read them. I don't have a slideshow because I wasn't about to put them up on a screen for you to look at because there, there's a lot of them that are related to that. Um, but under the Growth Management Act, um, impact fees are authorized to be, um, collected by, uh, cities. They specifically go for four, um, items. Public streets and roads, including bike and ped facilities or other, uh, multimodal, uh, capital improvement projects. They can be used for publicly owned parks, open spaces and recreation facilities, school facilities, the capital facilities, and fire, fire protection facilities. Again, the, the, not fire engines, but the facilities themselves. So, um, couple of other items that are associated with them, um, in that, uh, in those RCWs and WACS is they must be in the, in the capital plan of the comp plan. So there's the first time I get to say it. So, um, so whatever that.
Drinking.
Capital facilities plan looks like, no, it's not a drinking game. We wouldn't make it through, especially with what he just said. Uh, and then the second thing, or another thing here, is that it's based on a proportionate share that the development, um, contributes to the cost of that, uh, of those capital facility improvements that need to be made. And I want to think about that. That's not just in cost, but also in location. So when you think about it in a, in a smaller, uh, urban setting, smaller city, uh, they might have, you know, one square mile and everything is proportionate to that, you know, that development. But in a city, you know, as large as ours, both in population and in, uh, land size, um, you know, a development in East Yakima may not have a direct impact in, uh, uh, West Valley. So we have to keep that in mind as well. So again, there are, uh, those transportation impact fees. There's a number of RCWs about, uh, that as well. And, um, what I wanted to do was say that again, right in the RCW, must be in the comp plan. So what that means is every time I get up and visit with you regarding capital improvement projects for transportation, when I'm wearing my other hat, um, that project, if it's to receive any development, um, impact funds, uh, would need to be in that comp plan as well. Um, those impact fees are typically assigned to residential, uh, improvements. However, there are some communities throughout the, uh, state that, that have assigned them as well to, uh, commercial or industrial developments depending upon, uh, their location. And school impact, or I'm sorry, the school, yeah, school facility fees, again, more RCWs. Also, second word in here, must, that school facility must be in the comp plan. Um, again, it's typically related to residential construction, um, or some other mixed use, um, buildings as well. The fire impact fees must be in the comp plan. There we go. Good. Catching on. We've got, we've got it. We've got it. Uh, so again, I think the big thing there was it, um, you know, it's for the capital facilities only, not the operations or any of that, that fire, uh, equipment that could be there.
So that would go to like a station?
Yes, exactly. Yep, yep, yep. Which kind of goes back to my comment about a development in East Yakima, you know, really, it, it might be difficult to fund a West Valley fire station, right? Um, so that leads me to how do we get there? More RCWs, um, tell us how to get there. And primarily that local governments must establish a rate schedule. And so for, and, and, and specific to each type of development that is occurring. So while I want to be able to sit here and say it's very easy to come up with a number, when you talk about each development, Trevor's over here, you know, telling you about whatever table it was, and there's a lot of development types in there, right? So we need to be able to address each one of those according to, um, the RCW. Um, so there's some key bullets on that. So, um, the schedule must be based on a formula or other calculation that incorporates these five things. The cost of public facilities necessitated by the new development. So that goes back to, um, what is the proportionate share that the development is going to, uh, impact? And so therefore, uh, needs to contribute to. The cost of the existing public facilities improvements, how much is the improvement going to be? Adjustments to the cost of the public facilities for past or future payments ra, made of reasonably anticipated to be made by the new development. That's essentially saying, did anybody already contribute? That needs to be calculated into the, uh, impact fee rate. The availability of other public funding sources, which actually I'll get down a little bit further, is required. There has to be other funding. Basically, it can't be 100% funded by, uh, uh, impact fees. And then the method by which those public, uh, facility improvements were financed, which we all know, uh, can be a myriad of different ways. You know, I fund a lot of things by grants. Um, Scott's, uh, crew funds a lot of things by the, uh, his enterprise funds. So, um, there's all kinds of different sources of funding. And then to top it off, because nothing is ever easy, um, these rate studies should be updated periodically. So, um, you know, Scott does it all, you know, quite regularly with his, uh, enterprise funds. So it's kind of the same thing that we would be doing and bringing that forward, uh, regularly if we were to institute, um, impact fees as well. And that includes all the public hearing stuff and all the stuff associated with that. Now, um, on the positive side, depending on which side you want to look at it, there are certain impact fees, waivers, reductions and deferrals that are available, um, as defined in RCWs and WACS. So there, those need to be part of the code if and when we were to implement something like that. And then to further, uh, put a little bit of, you know, reins around this, um, there are, uh, a, there is a deadline for spending these funds and that is 10 years. So from the time of collection, you have 10 years to expend those funds. And, um, from my perspective, at times, there are certain, uh, capital improvement projects that may take longer than 10 years to actually, uh, implement. So sometimes those funds, um, may be in jeopardy if we had one, depending upon the location and the impact fee that collected and all that kind of thing. So we have to include that in our, um, rate calculation. So, um, real quick, I'm just going to go over the, the, the last thing. So what, what a rate, or what an impact study does is it's for capital facilities only. They're only for improvements reasonably related to the impacts caused by the new development. You need to use more than one source of funding. It must be included in your comp plan. Um, and then we have the 10-year, uh, deadline for expending of those funds. So I take, I took a look, um, at the MRSC site and, um, they have lots of examples, um, of different types for the transportation, the fire, the school district studies, they have all those kinds of fees, how, uh, different jurisdictions calculated them and implemented them. Um, I could only find one rate study, the, basically doing what, figuring out this whole calculation. And that study was 78 pages. I did not read that.
Come on.
What?
Um, so, yeah, it's, uh, I had better use of my time. Um, so, but I think what it really does is it illustrates the complexity that we're looking at if we were to move forward with, um, an impact fee rate study. So the ask I kind of have of you today here is this, is, um, as I started out, this is not my area of expertise and I know of nobody in the city who, uh, city staff who already has that expertise as well. We need to work with a consultant or someone to help us figure out a scope of work to even ask for the rate study to be done or the impact fee study to be done. I don't know how much that would cost. I'm going to guess it would be, you know, somewhere between five and 10 grand between staff time and their time and, and whatnot to try and figure out, okay, this is what we need to put out for a, uh, an RFQ that would have somebody do this work for us. The RFQ itself, um, I'm sorry, the, the study itself, I'm guessing it's in the tens of thousands of dollars. Um, you know, probably 50 or more. Um, it's going to be tied, now's the perfect time because it would be very, it'd be closely tied to the comp plan. However.
Like number 10.
That's, yeah. If you were drinking, you would be happy. Uh, and, um, so, you know, there, there is an option to tie, kind of tie it together with that, however, the comp plan does not have the funds to, to fund this either. So unfortunately, um, the, any expense the city would have from the planning division, which would take the lead on this, um, it's not in our budget. And so we really don't have a way to move forward with this unless the, uh, city council directs us to, and then I would be going and talking to finance to figure out where that would come from.
Find some money.
So, yeah, yeah. So I don't have any idea about the dollars that this would collect. Zero. Um, I, we're so far from a study, that's what that would tell us. And if I sat up here, I would be making things up with no basis. So I don't, I, when I head that one off right now, I have no idea.
So there's no money in the comp plan piece to actually go do the study as part of this process?
No, we're gonna work very hard to keep the comp plan under budget or within budget. I'm not even going to say under budget. I'm going to say within budget. Um, you know, he, uh, Trevor talked about the different elements that are in, included in the comp plan. Um, those cost money, right? The, the, what was it? Was it the environmental?
Well, there's the climate, there's the climate resilience element, but there's also the, and again, I'm happy to talk to you more about this, but there's also the housing element with, and our growth management area. Um, there's some timelines that aren't exactly lining up with data that I thought I could use from, um, we still, we still plan to coordinate with them, but there's, there might be some other data, things that I need to do with Burke that kind of move ahead of where the county's at right now. And that's going to be, that's a little bit different than initially planned in the scope of work.
The other thing is, as we do developments right now, the developers are often putting in sewer lines, streets, lights, curbs and gutters as part of their project. And so in that, in essence, that's an impact fee as well. Uh, I can remember, it wasn't that many years ago that you get a piece of land and you go build a house on it and you get a gravel driveway and you're ready to go. And in today's world, it's, you gotta have everything there before we even start building, don't we?
That's one way to look at it. Um, the, the other way to look at it is, um, they're building all of that infrastructure and giving it to us. So, um, it, the city is now taking on all the responsibility for those, that infrastructure, right? So we need to make sure that it is up to our standards to provide the best service, um, to our, to the constituents, right? And so you can argue that it's a, or you can say that it's an impact fee, but really it's, it's more about for that development to succeed and meet our requirements, they need to build it to a certain standard so that then it's ours, as opposed to contributing to something that we're gonna build. Because we wouldn't build that.
So what you're talking about is having impact fees, it would be an additional burden on top of what's already being born by con, by developers?
Yes.
But this is just a study to figure out what we'd even charge for an impact fee because it's very complex. He's, hasn't listed the 500 RCWs.
Right. Yes, yes.
Well, the other 10 cent.
It would be worth our while to do it based on how much she said it's going to cost. Will we recoup that? Do we even know?
I'm, I'm, I could go look, um, but I don't know that sitting here right now. Yeah.
You know what, like, I mean, you might not know off the top of your head, but maybe you can come back with this, is you know how, like other cities that have impact fees, how much they collect, like a city of our size that has impact fees, like how much do they collect in a revenue? You know, is it $50,000? Is it $5 million? Like, you know?
That's, that could be found probably pretty easily.
Yep.
Then how popular, do we know how many cities around our area use impact fees or around the state? That might be another, just a question to.
Union, Yap, Haslam, Walla Walla, Tri-Cities.
Hella.
Ellensburg.
Ellensburg. Um, yeah, most cities have them.
Okay.
Even sunny side to a degree has them.
Yeah, so, real quick. Um, and then some of the impact fees are just for transportation or just for parks or just for fire. So there's, there's a lot of options within that umbrella of what I shared.
The other 10 cent question is, what size of a development would it have to be to trigger impact fees? I mean, are you going to do it on everybody who builds a house?
That's part of the rate study or the impact fee look, right? Is, is it, you know, is it any development? Is it any new square footage? Is it, you know, I, is it a parking lot, right? If somebody wants to add a, you know, take a lot, vacant lot and make it a parking lot? I. lot? I don't know. That would all be part of that impact fee.
So like, in RFQ, you're asking is to go out, have someone actually give us a description of what we even are looking for in a rate study, an impact study, right? Because it's very complex, like, what the heck are we actually trying to get, right? So that part is just 5,000 to 10,000.
Yeah, I'm, I guess, I've done this before in others' projects, and that's where I'm kind of anticipating it. It's not super expensive to figure out what we want to ask for.
And then, and then we would put that out, and then we'd have people basically bid on what it would cost to do the rate study. So that would be a second piece coming back, and us going, yeah, okay, it's going to cost us 80 grand, forget that, you know?
And that's why I'm bringing this to you right now this way, is so that, that you can direct the activities, you know, of the planning office.
So council, you guys want to move forward with an RFQ to see, so that they can craft an RFP?
I'd like to explore that option, yeah.
Me too, because we, if there's money to be had from these fees, we need to be able to go after it, so.
I think when Moxie put in their big development, the Aho Homes and all them, they put in, Moxie charged them like additional $1,000 per home just as an impact fee, you know, once they put in the developments. And the city itself said, whoops, another $1,000 per home we put in for help maintaining the, like, the utilities that they're, that they're maintaining the streets and stuff. So I don't know where they got their, their impact fee study from, or they even did, they just said, hey, this is what we're going to charge, this is what we're going to charge for every house that you put in a 100-home development, additional $1,000 on top of every lot that goes in just for us to, you know, they have to maintain the streets now and all the other stuff, so, I don't know.
How hard it is or how easy it is.
So the ask is, five to 10,000 range, to just get the description. Is everyone in favor of that consensuously? And then we'll figure out how much the actual study will be when you get back to us on that.
So you want me to go out for an RFQ? I can do that. Not, not, I can do that, okay.
Yes.
All right. I will be-
Yes, yes.
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 I'm not a yes yet. I'm a yes.
That's four. I'll be a yes.
And so, just so you know, I will be talking to finance to figure out-
Find out.
Yep, where that money will come from, as it's not currently in the planning budget.
There might be more wisdom in hiring a grant writer, or somebody that could go through all these laws that we have on the books to search for available funds and bring them into Yakima. You've brought a lot of money in on your own, but I'm wondering if it's penny wise and pound foolish that we eliminated grant writers a few years ago.
That's a different discussion.
It's all about money. We want more money.
Well, is there, I was going to ask that, is there, is there any state, like, commerce dollars that could be used to fund the study?
A lot. There, sometimes, sometimes. There's also money that was available through the federal government as well, but I have no idea what that landscape looks like right now. So I'm going to guess it's probably not available at this time.
From the federal side?
From the federal side, yeah. The state side, maybe next fiscal year for them. There might be, it might be a little bit better time to ask, so.
Well, we have to have an RFQ before we can even know what the heck a study's going to cost. Right?
Yes, sir.
Are you on board with that now?
I have to make it so complicated.
It's okay, you don't have to.
I declare, just a clarifying question.
Let's break down with some more.
This is an RFQ.
Does, so you said the money that is collected, does it have to be allocated or spent within 10 years?
Spent.
Spent, okay.
And I would like to ask a clarifying question as well. Do you want me to come back with the amount collected from other jurisdictions before or after I do the RFQ?
I would like it before.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah.
Okay. I should be able to do that relatively quickly.
Let's do that before.
Yeah.
Feel good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we need a motion. I think consensus, we're good. Right, Mr. Attorney?
Wake up, man.
Okay. Sounds good.
What are we talking about?
Yes.
At this point, all you're asking is for information, so I think we're okay.
All right. Anything else, council, on this?
I'm good.
Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trevor, you get to-
I get to stay here.
Oh, my gosh, you just gets to be here.
I'm ready for this one, so I'll go.
All right, next up is the discussion of special event permits and street closures on Yakima Avenue.
All right. So, good evening once again, City Council. So this time I have some friends up here who are going to help explain this one. So tonight we have a bit of a presentation about special events, and special events and cruising. So if I can get the slideshow here, perfect. So a little bit of what I want to talk about tonight are special events and cruise nights. The reason I put these both into one is, they kind of overlap with one another here and there. Special events are, they include an application process through the city that comes into our office describing the event. It'll go to usually Connor, and there's a review fee for the application, $50, processing timelines and insurance requirements, which Connor will talk about a little bit more about, I'm sorry, he'll introduce himself too once he starts talking, so. And then cruise nights, cruise, so cruise nights are also entitled YMC, Chapter 9, YMC 9.25. It establishes the second and third Saturday of June, July, and August and September as open cruising. The proposed cruise nights outside of those dates would require a special event permit, which relates back to the special events that I just told you about on the other side of the screen. So I'll turn it over to Connor now.
Hi, everyone. I'm Connor. I'm the associate planner. I do handle all or most of the special event permits. So now I'm going to just kind of describe what the process is like on our end. The special events, they, if you look at my graphic up there, I don't know how easy it is to read, but underneath each different, you know, portion of the review process, I would say, I kind of listed the different divisions that might be looking at it. Because it's not just planning that looks at it, it's codes, engineering, traffic control, YPD, legal from time to time, and even city council at times. So generally speaking, you know, the applicant will submit their application for a special event. So then that starts the intake process. It'll get keyed into our system, assigned to a planner, that's me. So then, once it hits my desk, it might be, you know, a few days after it actually gets submitted, but it'll hit my desk eventually. And then that's kind of when the whole review process starts. So I have to go through the application, determine if it has all the necessary items. If it doesn't, I reach back out to the applicant, get those missing items, and I send it out a request for comments to different divisions at the city and some other people as well. So from there, that's kind of when we go into coordination. And coordinating is something that kind of happens throughout the entire process, so it's the second block up there, but really, there's coordination through the whole, you know, process of it, because, like I said, it's not just planning this, looking at it. I had to talk to YPD about it, I had to talk to traffic engineering, depending on, you know, what the permit might be requesting, whether there's street closures involved and all that kind of stuff. And then with that, there's also communicating with the applicants themselves and getting them in contact with these different, you know, people of the city as well. So then, you know, from there, then we have different things that come after the initial application that the applicant needs to submit. So that's going to be things like a certificate of insurance that, you know, is kind of intended to, you know, protect the city from being held liable if something were to happen during one of these special events, whatever that may be. We need, if there's going to be a street closure, there's an affidavit of notice of street closure. So kind of the point with including that in there is that there's oftentimes a lot of follow-up of reaching back out to these applicants and making sure that they're getting all these things in. That way we can actually allow the event to happen. You know, once everything goes well and everything has been coordinated, at that point, that's when it's, you know, complete, and we can issue the permit, but it's still not over, right? Because now that the event's happening, it might need YPD there, it might need traffic control there. So it's just a, it's a long process, and it goes through a lot of hands. In 2024, 46 special event permits were processed. And kind of just to, you know, go back over what I said before, it's a, it's a long process, it's time-consuming, and it goes through a bunch of different divisions and a bunch of different people had to look at these.
And so the only cost right now is just the $50 application fee?
Yes, and that $50 application fee is, not everybody has to pay it either, because nonprofits, which, I don't know what the percentage is, but I would say a large percentage of the applications we receive are from nonprofits, and they are not required to pay that fee. So oftentimes, it's, it's free.
How long has it been at that level, $50?
For a long time. I don't know the exact date, but since I started with the city in 2014.
And do we specify that nonprofits don't have to pay? Okay, so it's not like, oh, okay, all right.
Next, I would like, oh, yes, man. All right. So the next thing I'm going to talk a little bit about is cruising, the cruising the AV code. So before you, I have the cruising code. So this was codified in our municipal code. It was updated in 2019. And essentially, prior to its changing in 2019, the cruising the AV went through the special event process. They had to have a sponsor for the event, they filled out a special, an application, and they submitted to the city, they had to, whatever event was hosting it, had to get their certificate of insurance, and they basically treated it as a special event. 2019, it was changed to codify open cruising during designated times, which were those, the first, or the second and third Saturdays during the summer. And that's what is before you here. And that kind of brings us to different special events on Yakima Avenue. As far as like a public space goes, Yakima Avenue is kind of one of our larger thoroughfares when it comes to special events. And the last, it might not seem like a lot, but it's, that's quite a lot if you're looking at the course of five years, 25 events happening on a major arterial in the city of Yakima. It's kind of a big, it has an impact. So a couple of those events have happened during cruise nights, and typically what happens, I think last year it was the downtown Yakima Mile happened during a cruise night. And so what happened is that we had to bring the cruise night back to council as for a resolution to get to pass to designate a different night as the scheduled cruise night, and therefore Yakima Mile event taking precedent over the cruising. And that, and the, the YMC specifies that if there is an event that is using that space at that point in time, that they have, they have preference over the cruising event, that cruising event gets scheduled later. And that then brings me to the YPD.
All right. I'm Scott Grant, I'm the traffic sergeant, and a lot of these events are run through the traffic division, just because they require traffic control. So when we get the permits that are approved by Connor, they send it out to many different divisions. One of them is the PD, and they ask for a review of what kind of traffic control we're going to require. We get to determine the number of officers that we think we can do the event safely, and then at that point, then email sent out for any officers that are interested in working it. Selections made by seniority, which is pursuant to our CBA. And the majority of the events, I shouldn't say the majority, some of the events require a three-hour minimum call-out. So it entitles an officer to three hours of overtime for those events, unless it lasts longer than three hours, obviously. Cruise nights, we have set the minimum staffing level at seven officers and one sergeant, so eight total. And that's essentially to be able to shut down the AV safely at 10 o'clock or whenever the cruise ends. When it comes to parades, they can be very labor-intensive, especially the Sun Fair Parade, just because of the sheer length of it, the number of intersections we have to cover. And with our staffing levels, it's been very difficult to fill all those positions. I've had to ask the community service officers to help with those assignments. We've had to close down some of the smaller intersections with the help of the street department and the barricades. The Yakima Mile, it's fairly, it's fairly mild as far as staffing requirement. The motorcycle officers are pretty much primarily the only officers that are assigned to work that, with the exception of the transit officer who kind of maintains the downtown, the finish And that cost is actually passed on to the organizer, which is allowed by the municipal code. It's not one of the mandatory events that we, or the First Amendment protected marches that we have to do without cost.
So the cost of the officers is passed down to the event?
Correct.
Okay.
The YWCA and Salvation Army toy runs, they're a little bit different because they are actually listed in the municipal code. So we do actually provide those services without cost to the organizers. Those usually are worked by the traffic officers on motorcycles, with the addition of patrol officers that take some of the major intersections. We also ask the sheriff's office to help with that, and so obviously their costs don't get absorbed by the city, that's on their own. They do that out of the goodness of their hearts.
Can you do that all handily?
No, no. Any questions for me?
Yeah, so there's a lot, I mean, I met with, I'm, I put this on the agenda as a motion a while back, and there's a lot of parades that are done, that are in our code currently. I mean, I think Chief was in that same meeting I was in, what was it, like 13 or 14 different parades?
There's eight total.
Eight, okay. From the lighted parade to the, to the Toys for Tots, like, there's, there's a ton of different parades. And when, in that meeting, there was, it was close to, it was anywhere between $10,000 and $20,000 in overtime, basically, for officers to be managing each parade. So when you look at a cost, you know, $100,000, $125 just in parades, not including cruising, right?
Right.
Cruising's another cost.
Right. So there are 21 events that were ran through the traffic office last year, which include the cruise nights. The total estimated, estimated cost for overtime was $106,897.
$162?
$106,897.
What's up?
Yeah.
Didn't get it down to the pennies?
13 cents.
Oh, shit.
Yeah. Well, the reason why I brought it up, I met with, it's like every single year we meet with the cruising team, and they were, in that conversation, it was, wow, look at the cost of all of the parades that happen, that we don't have any way to currently recoup, because it's in our code that we allow these things for no cost on those parades. I think we need to figure out a solution on that parade cost aspect, because I don't necessarily know how to 100% cost recovery on those either, but I think there could be a way for us to get to 50% cost recovery or something on the parades front. On the cruise front, when I talk to the cruising folks, their, their thing is like the code, it's like, what, it's like eight cruising events, I think, eight or nine throughout the summer. They're very set, here's the time, here's the day, in the code, and they're like, maybe we only want to do four this summer, maybe we only do five, like, maybe we want to do three. But currently, how it's written is, these are them, and so they do it. And I actually talked to Sarah about this, was, our code used to say it was deemed by resolution by the council when those dates and times were yearly not set. We would permit cruising by resolution, which- yearly not set. We would permit cruising by resolution. Which, when I was in that meeting, he, those guys loved that. They're like, oh, this would be so much better. We could have, you know, some flexibility on some of that and not, you know, be so locked in and rigid. So that was, the reason why I put this on the agenda really is those two aspects, is I think there needs to be a cost somehow looking at some solutions for all of the different parades. I mean, the fifty-dollar permit for special events, that seems ridiculously low.
It needs to go up.
I'm glad we can at least recoup some of the, you know, personnel costs for those.
For the non-required events.
Yeah. But for the required events, we have to figure out some way to recoup some of those costs or just remove the required events. I don't know. But I do have a motion for the cruise piece, if there's any other discussion from you guys.
I'd like to see those types of things take place, but a lot of it is, I, I don't know. When I was growing up, cruise nights was a spontaneous thing and you just obeyed the, you know, the idea of closing down the streets seems a little bit over the top to me, but.
It's a different world we live in.
Unfortunately.
I'd like to see those things happen, but I don't want to price them out of the reach of people. But then I hate to see the city resources used on them too. So I haven't really given it any thought, like you have. You've got a lot more thought into this than I did at this point.
Well, and the, the other reality, like, so I asked my wife about this as a mother of two children. How, how do you, like, if we got rid of the required parades, what, what would, you know, that do? She's like, well, would it stop the parades from happening? Well, it might, you know, depending on what the cost is. She's like, no, don't do that. She's like, there's not enough stuff to do in our town anyways. Those are the fun things we get to do. So that's where I'm proposing is like, look, I don't know how to recoup those costs necessarily, but I think we have to come up with some sort of idea, even if it's fifty percent recovery on those. However, I do think if we're looking at it, I think it's too late for us to make any changes on the parades this year, per se. Allowing, like if we did make a change, maybe not tonight, but if we did make a change on something like that, it could like take effect in twenty-six so that these groups that are doing the parades have some time to kind of prep and organize. I know, I talked to one of the organizers for the Sun Fair Parade, and she was like, if you're going to make these changes, I need to know yesterday, you know? And I was like, hold just, we're not, we're not making any changes yet. So, but anyways, I think that would give folks some time.
Have you guys given it any thought? Do you have a recommendation on what you think would be fair, that the public would be willing to pay, that would allow these events to still happen and generate a little revenue?
I think it's something that we'd have to look at more too, just like you guys. I don't think any of us want to see these things go away altogether. Sorry to say that.
Yeah.
I think the issue is the parade organizers, like the Sun Fair Veterans, Christmas lighter parades, there's not a lot of money coming in. It, it's not like a profit for them. So to pass the, the cost for overtime onto them would be, it probably put the parades out of commission.
Don't they charge for each entry?
I believe so, but I don't think it's that much. Just to give you a little perspective, the cruise, the AV events, the eight of them totaled fifty-two thousand dollars. So almost half of the, the total overtime budget spent last year on these special events.
And as we looked at budgets, I mean, I think that's really the other point was, you know, we, we still have a twenty-twenty-six fund budget.
Yeah.
That we have to figure out.
Well, most of these non, of these events are, are put on by nonprofits or by volunteers.
Right.
I, I know I have spent thousands of hours of volunteer time helping with, you know, things like this. And putting out cash in addition to my volunteer time isn't a very attractive thing. I mean, and it's getting where it's harder to get volunteers to show up and help out with these types of things. So all this stuff fits in. I mean.
For the, for the special event, when you recoup, you know, personnel costs on that, is it the full amount that you're charging? You know, so if it's ten grand, are you charging them ten grand for those, you know, officer time and?
It, it depends. So like the Yakima Mile, it's not a, well, they partner with the YWCA to make it a nonprofit event. So we can recruit fifty percent. And so that costs, recruit about twenty-seven-hundred dollars worth of overtime. So we can recoup half of that.
Recruit half of that, okay. Interesting.
That sounds reasonable to me. I mean, that type of thing where you try to work things out with the people and make it. So the event still happens, but you get a little bit of money back.
Right.
Because they have sponsors for that, don't they? The, the mile?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so they're making money fairly well to do this. So.
Yeah. They also have a lot of costs associated.
Yeah.
And we require them to have certified flaggers at every intersection. So we don't have to supply officers for the, those duties, but.
How does, I have heard from some of the parade organizers is that, like, the insurance piece has recently, in the last year or so, become a lot more difficult in regards to the, I think it's the assault and battery piece of the insurance. And it's, like, one of them were even telling me, like, I literally had to go to a London insurance broker to actually find one because no one in the state would insure it.
Yes.
So.
So that, that has been one of the things, there's a few items on the insurance that have come up time and time again. And one of them is the assault and battery requirement. And it is hard, yes, we have heard that it is hard to get an insurance company local to want to cover that sort of thing. That is something that has come up with, you know, the cities, the cities insure. And we, when we had initially established this, this application, because we did look at that back in, I think circa twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, in that timeframe. We did consult with the cities' insurance and basically took their requirements and put them, put them in this, in our special event application. So we're, we're abiding by their requests at this point in time, which is where that comes from. So, and they, they do ask for that to be covered, but I have heard that it is, it is difficult. So I don't know if it's something worth revisiting. I don't know if they would, they would budge on that, but it could be worth revisiting.
I, I, well, I can't necessarily speak for them, but I can anticipate what I think they would say, which is that they would definitely strongly advise us to keep that in. I do know that when they were here, twenty twenty or whatever, whatever it was, that people have complained, like, hey, it's hard to find this coverage. But they've sort of offered, if, if that is the case, they've offered to, to kind of guide people to where they might find that coverage. Additionally, I just want to mention that, and I wasn't, this is before my time, but the, part of the reason why we are sort of insistent on having that coverage is because it's not hypothetical. We actually had a claim years ago that was, arose from one of those incidents, and I believe it was a very costly claim.
Well, I'm, I'm sure.
We have to protect.
You usually have something because something happened, right? So.
Exactly, yeah.
I, I just, I just, maybe there needs to be more help from our side to be able to give some providers to some of these parade organizers or something that would actually offer it. Because they, literally, I've had multiple be like, dude, I can, I can literally not find this insurance. Like, it's impossible. I don't even know where to find it. So, which makes it very difficult. So.
Well, if that's the case, we don't need to take any action. Nobody's going to do it.
Well, yeah, right. Well, someone obviously finds it. This person found it in London.
They, they, they do find it eventually. There are some, there are companies that will work for that, work with them. But it does take a little bit, little while to kind of work, get it out.
And I think, I think the reality is, and I don't, I'm not speaking for whomever you're talking to, but sometimes when people say that, what they really mean is, I can't find it for the price I want it to be.
Yeah, that's often the issue.
Which that could be the case. I had no idea. Any other discussion on that?
Nope.
I think the only thing I would say is like on the parades and special events side of it, I, I think it would be nice as a, I mean, I don't know if we can get consensus on this, but it's, it would be nice to see how we could recoup some of those costs, an idea, a plan, a thought, you know? Whether we adopt it or not is another thing. But it just would be interesting to see a solution to some of that as we, you know, fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars, trying to recoup half of that would make a world of difference. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there you go. I have a motion for the other half, but, but I think we can figure that out.
I just took some notes on that.
Okay.
And I would say also, you know, this discussion, there's also public works that really didn't, they do a lot with, you know, the barricades and a lot of the pre-work to that too. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot to this. We can bring back some more information about that. Yeah.
Okay. So the next piece is dealing with cruising. So I, I did meet with those guys again. I feel like it's been every year I've been on council, and it's one of the things that, you know, we, I have in a binder, remember in the back where I said, we don't talk about fireworks, we don't talk about cruising. Yeah, we're talking about cruising. But they did bring up an idea about trying to make some of that more flexible or less events or, you know, different things. And I was like, you know what? I, I think that's worth exploring. And it also might allow, you know, some budget savings if they're not doing eight, you know, in our code, eight events. However, this is brought from them, meeting with them as kind of a, a next step. So folks at home, if you're listening, it's not to shoot cruising and get rid of it. It's, it's working with them to make it a better event as, especially with all the budget issues at hand. So I move that staff prepare appropriate legislation to amend YMCA nine twenty-five relating to establishing cruising event dates and times by resolution annually.
A second.
All right, there's been a motion.
Comments on that, I think, why do we need to have city council make this decision? Why don't we just set up the format and they can come in and meet with him and set up one whenever they want to?
Because currently, our ordinance says it has to be on these dates.
So we need to change that.
At these times.
So we can do that.
Opens the door to change that and make it a voluntary type thing.
Yes.
Right. So in my, in, you know, in my mind, it would be every January, we meet with the cruising folks and say, okay, this is kind of where we're at on a budget. This is kind of where we're at for staffing. Let's figure out some dates and times that this works in. And, and then, and then it would come to a council meeting in February or March or whatever as a resolution that would get passed. But it would be working with them to establish those. And then, you know, because one of the events they talked about is they have a huge, one event that they bring in a ton of like classic cars and all these other things that come in from all over the state. And they wanted it to actually start like an hour later. And they're like, we currently can't. For us to change anything, we'd have to change the ordinance. It'd take thirty days. And there was no way for us to actually help them. And they were highly frustrated. This would allow us to actually have that flexibility. We could pass a resolution at any meeting and make those changes happen. So that's why.
Would it stay capped at eight? Is that the max they could do? Or were they talking about going more at all?
I don't think they want to do more.
No.
I mean, we could say that in the ordinance.
No, neither.
Just discuss it with them, yeah.
I mean, that's in, I mean, that's in the resolution, right? So, you know, council can determine, no, we're not going to do eight, we're going to do five. But that would be working with them, I think.
Right.
That gives the flexibility.
I'd like to see it get set up where they just come in and apply permit, permit when they want to do it. I, I don't see any reason to have city council be handling a resolution every year about cruising. Let's just set up the format, be done with it, let them do it through the institutions we already have in place.
The hardest thing with cruising, and we've gone around and around and around and around with this, is that the, they're not, there's not like a one club that owns cruising, right? So it's, it's, there's this car club, there's this car club, there's this car club, and then there's just everybody else who just shows up, right? And everybody else who just shows up aren't a part of any of these car clubs, right? And so it would be really great to say, yes, one group is going to organize this piece, but it's not, it's not that simple. And so what you end up having is, you know, five hundred cars show up and fifty of them are actually from car clubs.
If I may, kind of what I mentioned earlier is that's how it used to be pre-two thousand nineteen, is an organization would come in and apply for the special event. But then they function underneath the special event application, which is, there were some problems with that that didn't, didn't quite work with them, which is how they moved to this codified version. So, yeah.
But you know, then they'd have to provide, this is what I'm saying. They'd have to provide insurance, they'd have to provide all these other things. And so then it, then which group is paying for all that?
So you're saying we have to run it through the city council or the world's going to come to an end?
No, but you want them coming here, trust me. There's been very heated cruise discussions in this chambers. And, yeah, I don't want them coming here.
They'll be here next week.
They will. Absolutely. Okay. There's been a, a motion on the floor and a second by Councilman DCO, Councilwoman DCO. Sorry. And any other discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So that'll be the appropriate legislation coming forward. And we can then take another vote on. So, all right. Yes. Yes. All right. That's all we got, guys.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn to the next council regular meeting at February eighteenth, on February eighteenth at five-thirty PM in the city hall, council chambers.
All right. All right. There's been a motion to adjourn to our next council regular meeting on February eighteenth at five-thirty here at city hall. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You can go home.